Sorry about that. So it is six thirty-two, according to Apple, we will. Call this meeting of the regular Board of Selectmen of June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two to order. And Glenn, you said you had a. An addition.
Yeah, can I amend the agenda a little bit? If it's okay with you, too. Let's see, so Agenda Item six point one five Streetscape Update. Is that possible? Could we move that to five point two and maybe call it five point two A? And then maybe five point two B could be Streetscape Clerk for the Works Job Description, just to have those two. Just those two ideas there. I mean, if we could just talk about the Streetscape right before we talk about that job description.
That would be. Um, so Streetscape Update is actually old business. It's not new business. But I believe we talked about the Streetscape Clerk of the Works Job Description at the last meeting. Let me just double check.
We did.
We did. So. We can move that actually to. Six point one six. So it makes sense to me.
Okay. Yeah, that's good.
So I'll entertain a motion for that. To move five point three. I'm sorry, five point. Yep. Five point two. So go, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, so I moved to move, I moved to move five point two Streetscape Clerk of the Works Job Description to Old Business six point one six.
Great. Second. All those in favor?
I.
I.
And two other really quick ones. The six point one four, the Main Street Noise and Traffic Report. That one, I mean, we. The Noise and Traffic Committee did meet with us and had that report. Is that a little redundant in light of the fact that there's a subcommittee report after that, that I would like to say something about that?
So we have that on there so that I keep updating you all on where I am with the next steps of that report.
Okay. Okay, that's good. And then one last item, sorry to bore you all here. If we could add, if possible, I'd like to to take a look at the Electric Mower Proposal. If possible, could we add that? Maybe to Old Business at the very end?
Six point one seven.
Yes.
Just need that in the form of a motion.
I moved to add to the agenda. Item six point one six.
One seven.
Two point seven, sorry, Electric Mower Proposal.
Second. All those in favor? Hi. Fantastic. Alrighty.
Thank you, sorry.
That's okay. And bearing with me. I'm doing both ends of tech and running this evening, so. Appreciate everyone's patience. Have to get everything resized. Okay. Approval of minutes. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the June second Regular Board of Selectmen Meeting as submitted.
Second.
Thank you. Any changes or additions? Fantastic. All those in favor?
I.
I.
Thanks. Correspondence, there is none. Tax refunds, we have a couple. I make a motion to accept the three tax refunds totaling one thousand seven hundred ninety-four dollars and sixty-four cents as submitted.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
I.
Debbie came in at just the right time. Hi Debbie. The next item is the Tax Collector Request to Retain Overpayments of Taxes Less Than Five Dollars. So that was a an ordinance change that Debbie brought back in January and I will make a motion to approve the request from the Tax Collector regarding the retaining of tax overpayments totaling fifty-five dollars and sixty-three cents. Need a second.
Okay.
Thanks. Debbie, do you have anything that you need to add into this? It seems pretty self-explanatory.
No, no, you've done it.
Great, thanks. All those in favor?
I.
Hi. Thank you. Let's see, next would be Town Hall Second Floor Rethinking of Space. So in order to accommodate some growth up on the second floor, we're looking to juggle some of the offices, likely moving the registrars down to the small conference room. And having Park and Rec be in the the other end hallway where they are with the ROVs right now. The cost will likely be, you know, possibly one desk or some other sort of horizontal surface and moving of technology. We may need to spend a little bit of funds because I'm not sure what technology, what wired technology like Cat Five is in that conference room right now. So we need to figure that out, but I don't foresee it being a large expense.
So explain this to me, Jean, what the register is going to the to the small conference room and why is that again?
So if next time you're up on the second floor, take a field trip down to the other end of the hall just to see, there's a lot of equipment and supplies that Park and Rec has that they've accumulated just because they're standing up a ton of programs. And they don't, there's not really another space for them. So you've got Jared, the Park and Rec Director, and Chris and Tom, so their ASP and Camp Director. And the stuff that it takes to put on all these programs is kind of coming in and out of there. And the, you know, when the ROVs are going to have a couple of possibly elections over the summer and then there's going to be the election in the fall. And they they need more space to be able to have all four of them there, poll workers coming in and out, things like that during an election. And so it makes sense to put the ROVs down down at the other end of the hall.
So so having having been in a bunch of committee meetings in that small room, especially ARPA all these months. Does that mean that we only have one conference room, the large one?
So we will be able to use the, there's actually another conference room, which some people call the break room, some people call the file room. That's opposite of Barbara's office in that suite at the end of the hallway. So there's two tables that make a conference room. There's a number of organizations. I think the library used to have some meetings in there, Conservation Commission used to meet in there. So it would be that room and then the the large meeting room downstairs.
Could could that room that you're talking about, can that be a room for Park and Rec Equipment? Or or something? I mean, I mean, is there any way to, I'm just trying to figure this out. I'm having a difficult time.
Yeah, the, you know, the flow of people that is happening at the one end of the hallway is just more than more than really is acceptable for that one office with, you know, Jared and Chris and and oh my goodness, sorry. Tom. They, you know, they're organizing their equipment, they're having, you know, meetings and huddles and same thing with the registars of voters. If the registars of voters were having, you know, a huddle or a meeting before a primary, then Tom, Chris and Jared would need to go somewhere else. It's it's not optimal at this point. And it's been a request to spread them out a little bit more.
Is it simply possible? Could I, you know, I've got time on my hands now. It's summertime, not teaching anymore. Could could you walk me through that whole process? I would just like to know, like, just the comings and goings up there.
Yeah, come on up and we'll, we can sit and walk through.
Yeah, that's that's cool. I would. I appreciate just a little bit of, yeah, just time to think about that and to walk through that. Thank you.
I'm in all day. Tomorrow I have to have a meeting, probably four o'clock tomorrow. But pretty much other than that, I'm here. If you want to do that or next week, you know, whenever.
Let's try next week. Yeah. Give me a good time next week. Okay, thank you.
But I just asked a question. I always thought there was room in the community house for all the Park and Rec equipment. That no longer is available.
Um, it's not that it's not available, it's it it takes them out of the building for any of the moving around or managing of the equipment. So it was, it makes more sense for it all to be here.
Is there room for them to have an office in the community house?
It's it's, there's no proper, there's no internet, there's no, just the costs and the there's not the right space. The only spaces are spaces that have no windows that are really closets.
Because I agree that upstairs meeting room will, has been used.
Okay. Sorry, but we haven't, there has been very little overlap, Joyce checked, and there's very little overlap. So we'll, we'll keep moving forward and Glenn, we can.
Yeah, I'll come in.
And run up.
And Rufus, if you want to, if you have some time to, it'd be great if.
Yeah, let me know, maybe next week. I know the Department of Assessment Appeals for years has met in the Town Clerk's Office in the evening.
Okay.
That's a empty usable space with two tables.
Okay. Yeah, well, we'll get together and figure it out.
Okay. So next is the resolution regarding the pension plan. So I will put in the form of a motion to adopt the following resolution. The undersigned authorized representative of Town of Kent, the employer hereby certifies that the following resolution was duly adopted by the employer on June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two, and that such resolution has not been modified or rescinded as of the date hereof. Resolved that the form of amended plan and trust effective January first, two thousand twenty-two presented to this meeting is hereby approved and adopted. And that an authorized representative of the employer is hereby authorized and directed to execute and deliver the administr- to the administrator of the plan, one or more counterparts of the plan. The undersigned further certifies that the attached here two or two copies of the Town of Kent Money Purchase Pension Plan as amended and restated, and the summary of plan provisions which are hereby approved and adopted. I need a second for that.
Second.
So this is housekeeping that came from the pension company that from time to time, I believe it's some IRS requirements that we send them some updated documents, and this is just a resolution that supports those documents. So again, just some housekeeping.
Where did this this document come from?
Came from the pension company, the company that runs our pension.
Okay.
Any other questions?
And all those, oh, sorry, does this have to be updated, I mean, frequently or or how does?
It is. They sent it to us and said the IRS requires updated documents from time to time, and this is one of those updated documents. Again, it's truly just housekeeping for the pension folks. All those in favor? Hi, thank you. We'll get this over to the pension folks. I am going to, Rick is here, right? Thought I saw him. I know I saw him. There he is. Rick, I'm gonna turn the next three items over to you. So the first is tree pruning and removal contractors. The RFP. If you're speaking, you're on mute. Here we go.
You talking to me or?
Talking to you. Yes. Turning over for five point five, five point six, five point seven for those, those three RFPs. We'll do the tree pruning and removal first.
Okay, I would recommend we stay with Emmens Tree. He's been our contractor for the last ten years. And his pricing's gone up from what it was before, but he held that price for ten years, so. Would expect it would go up.
We're due. And you're happy with their performance and their pricing seems.
Good work for timing and stuff like that.
Okay.
So we don't use them. Okay, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
I was gonna say, we don't, as far as storm work, we very seldom use them. Most of the time, storm stuff involves wires and the power company takes care of that. Once in a while, we have a tree where there's no wires that we just can't get up that high to take care of, so I have to call him in, but. So the storm damage or storm hourly is maybe four or five hours the most a year.
Rick, how much of their rates have gone up this year? I see what it is.
He held fifteen hundred dollars for ten years, so.
Fifteen hundred per day, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so.
He was in on the front page of the other bid, but if you read his his actual prices, what he references on the second page and they come out the same number or above what Emmens.
Yeah, I think the math we did actually came out when you do true apples to apples, which is bucket truck with operator, chipper truck with operator and the labor traffic person. So if you do the apples to apples, they're twenty-eight hundred a day.
Who's the tree warden, Rick?
Bruce Bennett.
Bennett.
Okay. So if he identifies a tree that needs to come down or something like that and the, you know, are right away or leaning over. That's the exception to storms and emergencies.
Well, normal, anything, mostly all we take down are dead trees.
Yeah.
We do very little pruning. And we don't do any cabling or anything that's.
Right, okay.
In the last few years with all the ash trees. This year, the gypsy maws are chewing the heck out of everything, so I'm sure the next couple of years will be even more dead ones to take down.
Right.
So I'll make a motion to accept the proposal to contract with Emmens Tree and Landscaping Service LLC for three years for tree pruning and removal as outlined in the RFP.
Second.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Do we think their rates will go up after this year, or do we think that they'll they'll hold fast for a couple of years or?
Hold for at least at least the three years in this bid. We hadn't.
Yeah.
I hadn't renewed any of the pricing and when I went to look for it, it was two thousand ten. It was the last time we put one of these out, so Sean kept the price the same, even though his, I'm sure his expenses were way above that. What he was charging me.
Right, so this is for a three-year contract.
An agreement, it's not really a.
Yeah, an agreement. All those in favor? Hi, thank you. Alrighty, on to drainage replacement.
We put the same RFP out. Joe Goble was the only one that responded, and we've been using him for again, for the same ten-year period with the same pricings that he was given. I'd have to look back. I don't, I didn't look back at this all one to see if it was the same machines that he priced here or not, but it looks like tobacco was probably the same, but the other machines I think are newer than what he had before. And this, we hire him on a hourly basis to help us out when needed. If we go out to bid on a particular job, then it's usually just bid out for the whole job. So whether he bids on that or not, it's up to him, but that's outside of this. This is just for like on-call work.
This is the only response we got?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yep. So I would recommend we stay with Joe.
Make a motion to accept Joe's proposal?
For three years? Just so we have that in the motion.
July first, two thousand twenty-two to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five for drainage replacement.
I will second that, and thank you for the motion. Anything further? All those in favor?
I.
Hi, thank you. Last but not least, truck replacement.
Uh, that's just to let you know that we had no responses to the RFP for that. So that would ask that you let me go out and look for those two vehicles and just use state better source well pricing.
And what's the, what truck is that that you're replacing?
The small dump truck, which some people call it Mason Dump. The little and pickup truck that I drive.
And generally, when you go, the state bid is obviously vetted, approved vendors. And so do you generally come back to us with that price or it's within, if it's within the budget?
It will have to be within the budget more than likely. And yes, I will come back before approval to purchase.
Okay.
But whether it's from the Connecticut State Better Sourcewell is another one that we belong to. And they do a instead of having actual bid numbers like the state bid does, they do a percentage off the manufacturer's normal pricing. So whenever I would go to a vendor, they would just say the source well pricing and give me the number. Like though we're on the state bed, the actual truck number is there at the time. You just have to do the options and all that.
Okay.
And I haven't looked the last couple of weeks to see what they've done with the increases because of all the, I'm sure, well, the pickup prices are going up like everything else, but.
Right. Okay. Thanks, Rick.
All master's permission to go shopping.
I think that's, that's the, you're down to those choices. And fingers crossed that there's actually something there.
Well, I might do a travel, you know.
We'll move on to Old Business.
Thanks, Rick.
So I don't know what the corrections are that are needed for these motions. I didn't hear back from Joyce what was missing from these motions, so we'll just have to keep these as open items for the next meeting. Six point three Assessor and Tax Collector. I think this was an error. I think she meant to put Assessor and Tax Collector Computer Issue, which they requested to have removed. I do have Yucatech doing a little bit of a deeper dive because Jen and Jim did say that they did not have any improvement in the forget what the name of it is. I don't know if it's the bridge or if it was running a report with their software and so he's, Bob at Yucatech has contacted Vision to find out what the difference is between what's going on here and what's going on in Sharon. One of the salient differences is that ours for the tax assessor software is hosted virtually in the cloud and the from what I understand, the one in Sharon is locally hosted on a server there. So I'm sure that that's where part of the issue is, but Bob is looking into it and having a conversation with Vision just to find out what it is. And if there's anything that we can do to improve it. Six point four Scouted Cook BIA update. I've asked Jeff for dates for a special meeting to get an update on where they are with their brief and a number of other issues. And he's on vacation, so I'm sure as soon as he hits his office, probably Monday, he'll get back to us to get us a special meeting in the next probably ten days. Salary review, management review. I don't know if y'all are, I am not prepared to deep, do any sort of deep dive into this tonight. So we'll keep that open and hopefully focus on it. Really starting at the next meeting. These longer meetings are tough to have it part of because there's so much on this agenda, but we do need to start to attend to it.
Jean, is there, is there a way that the cog can give us like a spreadsheet of just the comparison of salaries across?
Or they do a salary survey every year, CCM does one. And I just found in the, on the CCM website that there's like a portal that we can log into. So I just found that like two days ago. So I can get the CCM, I'll get you the cog one, whatever the most recent one is, the most recent CCM one. So you have some some food for thought.
Yeah, I mean, I think Rufus, you said the last meeting that it'd be great if we could have some, you know, just some numbers from other towns. I think, I think.
Yeah, I think that's very important.
Yeah.
And and I spent a good chunk of today doing that, actually. Like I just made the expression, an Excel spreadsheet here, and I just was just looking at various salaries in, you know, in Kent, Washington, Cornwall, Gojsh and Warren, Sharon Salisbury. And so I've started to compile something on my own.
Oh, yeah, the cog, I'll get you the cog's most recent one, save you that time.
Okay, good. I guess I, I still poured over the report from what Ms. Randy Frank and Mr. W. Lee Palmer from a couple of years ago, two thousand eighteen about about the salary review here. I read that over again. And it's, you know, it's very informative. It's great. But again, you know, that was four years ago now and and I'd love to see what other towns have, you know, are currently what they're at. So but but I think it's important that we actually do a deep dive here eventually. This has been on the, on the docket for a couple of meetings now, and I think
Yeah.
I think it's time, so.
Yeah, and I not that I'm not worried about time, I'm always worried about time, but this is sort of to head us into the next budget season.
Sure.
Right, so we want to be having gone through all of this sort of research and diving in ahead of, you know, that December-January timeframe.
Okay, so I'll continue to do my own research, too, and I don't know, maybe I'll.
I'll get you the cog stuff, so that'll give you the twenty-one, I think, towns of the cog.
Okay, great.
Joy, for six point six, the video conference system, Joyce has a quick update in the. Update in the folder. She had a couple of meetings with Yuka Tech and, um, it's all, you know, sort of. Moving forward. Um, I have not had a chance. To get together with Eric. He's been super busy. Um, we've both been super busy, so I'm just going to keep that. Open for, we'll have it. I'll, I'll hopefully have it midweek next week, be able to meet with him, um. So that you'll have it in plenty of time for the next, um. Meeting and we can get that wrapped up. Um, pandemic update, uh, we had seven reported cases in the last two weeks, but again, that data is a little. Goofy because of all the home kits, masks and test kits are still available to the public. The test site continues. DPH is pending that, um, and. One year extension of the contract with the vendor, so we'll likely see that there for a while. Um, we are running low on test kits. Um, I gave out ten today as a matter of fact, um. So there are people still coming in to get them. So emergency management is looking in to. Different venues to try to get them because the state's not giving them out for free anymore. We knew that pipeline wasn't going to stay open forever, so, um. Uh, six point ten, the flag policy, um, Randy sent us a late breaking, um. Document which I will find and put on screen share if you give me one second. Let's see. Got it? All right. Can we see a word document open that says resolution regarding flag policy town of Kent, Connecticut?
Yes.
Fantastic. So he is, so it's in, he made just a couple of edits. In the green that you'll see here. And his, um, I don't know if you had a moment to read his. Um, email. Let me just get to that.
I if it came in today.
Yeah. So give me one second. Um, boy, there's a lot of pure stuff happening and they keep sending out lots and lots of. Updates, uh, attaches my red line suggestions for relatively minor revision of the proposed policy. The first half is essentially intact in that it is an accurate summary of the US flag code. Codified at for US code. Second, local section well covers most issues. Most of the language I proposed. Is in the nature of clarification or adding fine points. So the, um, points are. Um, he added evergreen language such that the policy automatically amends to conform any revisions of the US flag code when we talked about it. That was one of my concerns that if the US flag code changes, then we're now out of step. So he just added that. Add a gubernatorial half staff authority, which sometimes occurs when a Connecticut tragedy first responder combat death happens. Slightly revised the local policy relating to protocols and procedure, um, request and resolution. Added language to reinforce that the deployment of special flags is not a matter of right. Uh, clarified that the policy explicitly confers sole discretion on the Board of Selectmen via formal request and formal resolution. And removed, uh, taxpayer status as an element of eligibility to avoid an equal protection discrimination claim. I'll buy it. Ever so remote. So he changed that to resident instead. So we'll just take a quick look. He added here. Just the as per presidential or gubernatorial proclamation. Added here. Displayed the discretion of the Board of Selectmen. And then, excuse me, added here, the green. Can you read that? Okay, you want me to make it bigger?
I could see it.
And then just removed some. Some, a little bit of the wordiness. Again, added that it's the discretion of the Board of Selectmen so that we're, so the Board of Selectmen is authorizing. The, um. You know, any requests. And this, the last part just reinforces that it's DPW that raises and lowers the flag, not, um, the requester.
Okay.
I would like to put this all in our resolution template that we've been using for the last, you know, four or five. Sort of formal resolutions that we've put through the flag one, the, um, Board of Ed solar project, the, um. P and Z. Opt out. There were one or two more. It's just to put them all in the same. Formatting, so they're all sort of following the same rhythm. And I do want to clean up, I think. This, um. Where it says section two policy and then subdivision one is a little confusing to me, so I'll.
Put that on a different line.
Yeah, I just want to, you know, formatting wise, clean that up.
Yeah.
If that's okay.
Yeah, put subdivision one sites on its own.
Right, but then there's this, it starts with section two, but that's because it's referring back to the US flag code. So there. We need to make, there needs to be just like some connector to show that this whole part is the US flag code. Just that makes it clear and I. Got the, you know, it came in a little bit later this afternoon, so I didn't really have time to mess with the formatting, but I'll mess with the format. I'll not mess with. Improve the formatting, so it's just clear and tidy, put it on the resolution. Form and then bring it back to you all just for, so we can get it passed at the next meeting.
Uh, in the middle of this section, I, you, you skip by that pretty quickly, but does it include? Who's providing the flag?
So for a, um, yeah, for a.
Size requirement or anything like that?
Yep, so, um. Where is that? Uh, the flag shall be displayed on the flag pole located at Town Hall, because it will be under and no larger than the flag of the US flag. Um, which conforms to the US flag code. And it shall be, there it is, it shall be provided by. The resident of the town of Kent. I'm going to turn off the, um, if I can do that, this is a little bit. Persnickety. Just going to turn off the markups for a second, so you can, sometimes it's actually easier to sort of. See the flow. So.
You know, if somebody, it provides a flag that is. You know, really and. Sort of unpresentable condition, do we have the? Ability to refuse it?
So right above that shall be displayed only by permission of the Board of Selectmen pursuant to adoption of a formal resolution. So if the Board of Selectmen, um.
We would be seeing the flag before we give permission.
Yeah. And, you know, we can always come up with a form that. Has this resolution and, you know, what we need so that it's easy and it's the same for everybody. You have to provide a, you know, a photograph of the, of the flag and the size of the flag. Just make it simple for people. And a quicker. Adoption and, you know, processing for the Board of Selectmen. So I'll get this cleaned up. Send it back over to you all and then we'll make sure that it's on the next agenda. So you have some time to. Consume it in the final format and then it'll be on the agenda.
Great.
Makes sense.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm happy with this. That's good.
Alrighty, let me get back to. Where I started from. Okay. So on to EV charging stations. Um, I had a meeting with, so we have a community and ever source community lia- liaison. And at the head of hurricane season, they always want to come out and meet with us, so, um. We met with them and in addition to talking about their hurricane emergency response plan that they're required because of the whole pure thing with Stormy Saez. To put in place, uh, he also shared information on a new program that they have for, um, rebates for. For businesses and municipalities that provides up to twenty thousand dollars in a rebate. For these level two chargers and the, the states, um. Uh, climate, um. Climate change initiative and their plan that supports the, that, um, trying to. You know, solve the issues of climate change. They're, um, they're all, they're recommending at least that level two. The one out here is a level one, level two is a much faster charger, so, um. This will go out to the chamber for businesses and this is also going to be sort of in Congress with that. Alternative fuel corridor that's happening through the Federal Highway Administration. I think I've mentioned a couple of times, which is. Route seven, New Milford to the Mass border. So we're also going to see grant funding come in from that. Um, and that is a purposeful, the federal government wants to make this, um, an additional. Um, charging corridor, so, um. I think this is, this is going to be, um. A, a great boon for our community to get chargers into the, um, into town and, and will help businesses that want to. You know, if the pharmacy wants to put one in, if, um, the. Any one of the businesses over at the, um, the town center want to put them in, there's, um, rebate funding to support that. So this will go out to them, will be, um. Investigating this. I'll look into this with Barbara to see what the costs are going to be for a charger and what we can get for rebate. And, um, move forward from there.
And I have her hand up.
Is it, um, regarding the charging station?
Yep.
Okay.
Um, just so that you know, they are considered structures and they can't be put in. You know, we are going, we are working on changing our zoning regulations, so they're not going to be able to put them in tomorrow. I already have a request for the Kent land, um, the Kent school. To put two in and I had to postpone that until at least September. By the time we change our regs. To, um, have them considered to be not structures. They're not, you know, that they'll have to meet their setbacks. So, um, just so that if everybody comes in all of a sudden, knowing that they're going to be getting money. They're not going to be able to put them in unless they meet their setbacks until we change the regs. So you might want to share that with the chamber.
That's anticipated by September or?
It all depends with the commission, if the commission likes my wording or not. But in order for me to change the zoning regulations, it doesn't just take one meeting because I've got statutory requirements. Where I have to notify the local governments and adjoining towns. And wait thirty-five days. So, you know, changing the regulation takes a minimum of two months.
Okay.
So I'm thinking September at this point in time.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
So six point twelve, um, I don't have any update on the, the Betty unit, but, um, the cog. Hosted or facilitated rather an initial coordination meeting of all of the provider of what's called the RITZ program, which is the rural independent. Transportation system. And, um, Samantha, Social Services Director is reaching out to the cog for a follow-up. Uh, to see what, um, I know they want to sort of, um. Bring all of those providers back and solve some of the gaps that are continuing in the Northwest corner. I also have, um, a meeting with Warren and Washington for selectmen to talk about a, um. Partnership, a possible partnership with their shared bus. They currently have a bus that they share and they said they would be, um, more than. Interested in discussing, um. Including or adding Kent to that, uh, program. So we'll, um, we'll be meeting in the next couple of weeks and I'll come back with, um, what comes of that. So six point one three, um. The Juneteenth holiday, uh, there was a, um. Bill that passed this year, Public Act twenty-two, one twenty-seven, and it establishes Juneteenth. Independence Day as a legal state holiday beginning in twenty twenty-three. Um, the. Public Act is effective October, so that, um, makes the first. State holiday next, um, June nineteenth. So I'd like to add this to our list of holidays currently in our manual, um, right now. Just to quickly review. Um. Though the holidays. That we have are, um, that are set by either federal or state decree are Martin Luther King Day, President's Day, Memorial Day. Labor Day, Columbus Day, Thanksgiving and Veterans Day. We also, I'm not sure why they're in different lists. We're all, town halls also closed, January fourth. Um, July fourth, December twenty-fifth and a half day on Christmas Eve and a half day on New Year's Eve. And then two days set by the Board of Selectmen, Good Friday and the day after Thanksgiving. So I'd like to add this to that list of, um, the days that are set by federal or state decree. Starting in twenty twenty-three, oh, that aligns with the, when the state is, um. Having theirs effective unless we want to do it for this year, which means we'd have to make sure that everybody knows that Monday would be a holiday and the town hall would be closed.
Uh, I, I would propose next year. I mean, that's about three days away, so, um, yeah. And, and how will this be recognized? This will be a day off for town.
A town hall would be closed, so all those that I just listed are town hall closure days.
Okay.
This would be added to that list. And we pretty much align with the state. Um, the state still, interestingly enough, um, splits out. They don't do President's Day. They do. Um, Lincoln's. Birthday and, um, George Washington and Washington's birthday. So that's the, uh, difference. And I think that might be it. Yeah, that's it. So, and they do have their policy, um, set that if a holiday occurs. Oh, I think we have the same thing. No, I don't think we do. Um, and we can change the policy. The state has it so that if a, if a holiday falls on Sunday, then the, um. The observed holiday is on the Monday. If the holiday actually falls on a Saturday, then the observed is on a Friday. Um, and we can, you know, at another time we can make that change, but for tonight, um. If we're ready, I'm, I would make a motion to add. June nineteenth known as. Um. Juneteenth Independence Day to Section Nine Administrative Policies, Town Hall closures. In the town of Kent Employee Policy and Procedure Manual effective beginning in twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Thank you. Any further questions? Alrighty, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, thank you. Uh, Main Street Noise and Traffic Report, I've, um, DOT was sent the report and I've requested a. Phone meeting with the Division Chief of Traffic Engineering to, um, talk about next steps. Coincidentally, one of the new planners at the cog is like a thirty-two year, um. DOT employee and I was on the phone with her talking about something completely different and she mentioned that she had come from DOT. Um, so I said, I've been struggling to find the right person to talk to. I get a note, that's not our department, but then nobody says, but you should call because. I get a note that's not our department, but then nobody says, but you should call because it's just a huge place. So, so she said, oh, yeah, you need to call this person. And here's their email address. So I left them a voicemail and followed up with the report and then asked for a phone call. So hopefully that will happen in the next week or so. Streetscape update. Just want to make sure I'm including the ones that we added. So curbing materials are proving very difficult to source. Mather has informed us that in order to get the project started this summer, they have exhausted their sourcing. And they're down to one supplier and that supplier, which is North Carolina Granite. Between the just premium on because of the supply chain and because materials are very difficult to find. And the premiums for fuel, we're looking at an increase in cost for the curbing from what the bid was of six, a little over $67,000. There is funding in that has been authorized, you know, that was authorized in the resolution. So I just wanted to keep the board up to date on that. And Mike Doherty from SLR even said they're doing a project that is much smaller in Waterbury, and they also are going to be proposing North Carolina Granite in order to be able to do the job. Phase two, which is that TAP funding. That's moving forward. Again, we have a concierge basically that works with us. That's a contracted sort of connector between us and the DOT, making the process much smoother and just fantastic. They're waiting, right now, we're sort of in that design phase with SLR. So it'll probably be four or five months before we hear back from them again, getting through some work plan and work schedule stuff. So but that's continues to move forward.
So I'm sorry, did I miss? When, when do we think a shovel may go in the ground for this?
So I'm gonna call them or actually I'm going to email them tonight when we get off the phone and they'll hopefully pretty quickly give me a timeline. They're looking four to six weeks to get that material in in and ready to go. So I will, I will press and we will press forward.
It's four to six weeks from today.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll see what what magic they can do, but we're, we're just going to continue to press forward and and they they know that we want to press forward quickly and get this moving along.
I think we do. Yeah, well, yeah, okay.
For sure.
Keep pressing them, Jean, keep doing it.
6.16 Streetscape Job Description. And I apologize for the late email out. I know I have it here somewhere. So this, I'm going to put on screen share to me one second. So this is a fairly, Rick helped me with this. I'm sorry, Donna, you, did you have your hand up? I just noticed that.
No, I just forgot to put it down up.
Thanks. Rick gave me a Rick, what was that that we based this off of?
I the part that I gave it for me was, I just wrote up and then we also had the proposal from Cardinal Engineering for the Oldsbridge project. So.
Right. So we pulled together, Rick gave me some notes. We pulled together some notes from Cardinal. This was also vetted by SLR. They gave me back some edits. It's a pretty basic boilerplate duties. And I spoke with Mike Doherty and he agreed on the the concept of the 25 to 28 an hour for the for the hourly rate. And I was hoping that Curtis Rand in Salisbury might have something, but they they didn't use a clerk of the works. They used an engineering firm. But SLR doesn't have anybody in their construction department to be able to, you know, come out and do those daily inspections and and provide the the work that we need to do. So my hope is that we can get this posted and we can get some folks in to do interviews and have it coincide with when Mather is ready to start that that curbing and getting started on the project. The, in the bid documents, the the stated time is about 180 days. So that's why that approximately six months is in there under here, under the purpose. And this is all very standard reporting, meeting the any grant deliverables, ensuring the work zone complies with with all the documents, call before you call before you dig DOT OSHA. It's all pretty basic. And again, Mike Doherty, who's been involved in this project from pretty much day dot has had a couple of edits and I added those in.
So this is for approximately six months. And is this, is this five days a week? Is this seven days a week? I mean, what?
It's going to be dependent on the the contractor as they're as they're working it. I believe I put needs to be flexible.
And and were we getting the money from for this? Where?
In through the the funding for the project.
The project itself. Okay. Okay.
Where did I leave off there? I think I left off sort of there. Again, they have to have experience with construction documents. Oh, that's where I put flexible work hours needed. I don't think Mather works on the weekends. Unless they're, you know, what they need to do to get the job done. Glenn has her hand up. So if it's okay with you all, take your question. Oh, where'd she go?
I'm here. Okay, I just turned off my hand. Does, did SLR give any kind of estimation of how much time would be involved? So you guys know how much this this overall cost might be?
They did not.
And does that 180-day clock start when their bid is awarded? Or is it is when the shovel gets in the ground?
I'd have to check with SLR, but I think it's the when the shovel is in the ground.
Thanks.
So I just did some quick calculations, very, very, very approximate. But if it's $25 an hour, is that what I saw up there, Jean, at the top?
Yep.
If it's $25 an hour times eight hours a day, that's $200 a day. If it's Monday through Friday, that's, that's, that's a thousand a week. So that's 4,000 a month times six is 24,000. So, so by my calculations at the at the top level, this person would receive roughly $24,000. And we're, we're confident that this is in the in the budget for the project.
It's part of the, yeah, part of it, funding resolution.
I mean, it could be a little bit lower, could be a little bit higher, depending.
I would entertain a motion. So we can get the job posted and get somebody in place in order in time for the, you know, when when Mather is ready to start their work.
See. Okay, so a motion to to accept, accept the Streetscape Clerk of the Works Job Description and post it in time for the beginning of the project.
I'll second that. Ready? All those in favor?
Okay. Hi.
Hi. Thank you. Find my place again. 6.17 Electric Mower Proposal.
Yeah, just to, just to bring that up again, the last time we talked about that, I guess I was a little bit fuzzy about what was going to happen or what was, what was, what should happen. And you know, and just knowing a little bit more now, I just have a few questions. I mean, has a mower been purchased yet?
I think, Rick, you're still on the call, right? Yep.
Yeah, no, we haven't. We're just trying some out. I will get big proposals and submit them to you guys.
Yeah, so the at our last meeting, we authorized Rick to move forward with obtaining bids. So he's getting, he had a one demo, you're going to have another demo where they're going to be able to actually leave it for you all to try, right?
Yes.
And and this is a machine that's going to be purchased by the end of this month, correct? Like this is this fiscal?
If it's not by the end of this month, then I would have to if we did purchase it after June 30th, the money, the additional money would have to come out of the new operating. So what we have left over.
So I, I guess what I'm getting at is that if we're, you know, if if we need a mower now and if we are worried a little bit about where the money is going to come from, because the electric mower is more pricey than a regular gas mower. Could, could we just go with a regular gas mower currently and just wait until the next round, then the the next machine that goes down? I mean, do we have to do this, this, this instant?
Oh, we still have the mower that we're going to replace, which we're still using. It was just in the capital plan that was replacement yard come up. So we had the money there, but when that money was put in, started 10 years ago. So that was when the very basic electric ones were coming out. We so I never planned on an electric one. So we started looking at this year, some of the quick few of the equipment shows. We did look at a few last year, but I didn't increase the capital because that'd be a pretty big increase in one year for something like that. So.
So, so if we've planned for this, we've planned for a certain type of mower, i.e. gas, where we don't have to actually, you know, find extra monies for, wouldn't it be, wouldn't be prudent to maybe go with that this time around? And maybe the next time around, we plan for, if we want, an electric mower that's significantly more expensive?
I think that we did the right thing by moving over toward an alternative source. I don't think that we can continue to delay, delay, delay. It's a small step in the right direction as far as removing ourselves from consumption of fossil fuels. I, I would think we should continue to go in the direction that we chose last month or last meeting.
Yeah, I think we should give Rick the you know, we agreed to have him move forward with these, you know, getting these bids and I think we should let him move forward and come back to us with the bids. And then we'll go from there.
Okay.
On to subcommittee reports. Glenn Arpani's assessment, we have a meeting coming up.
We have a meeting coming up. So we, we did not meet last week and we, we have, we're this Wednesday, the 22nd at 4:30. So it's the committee. And they are going to present, you know, the committee and me, we will present the the reports to this group. And and then we will talk about it. Any questions either of you will have about the process, what's in the report? I hope you've read it. You know, please, and if you haven't, please take a look at it before the meeting and and we'll, we'll go from there. But but Wednesday, the 22nd, 4:30, big day.
Thank you for getting that report out to us in a timely manner so that we get time to digest it.
All the, you know, all the credits due to that committee, that committee worked really hard for a very long time.
Yeah.
You know, and they they started way before. So all credit goes to them. Thanks.
Next is Affordable Housing Plan Steering Committee. Our next, we continue to meet, our next community forum is next Wednesday, June 22nd, a busy day. And should have a working draft that will start to work on shortly after that forum when we call through the feedback from the the meeting and, you know, just working towards that November date that we gave OPM. Broadband Working Group, this group has not met, partly because we lost our chair, but also there have been a lot of just a lot of changes happening with funding sources and interest at the state level, the regional level, the federal level, all to take a more regional approach. And the COG is, has actually planned a round table that I'll be attending next week. So we'll wait and see what comes out of that round table to guide the group where they need to head next. Kent Sustainability Team continues meeting to talk about the various action items. I certainly breathed a sigh of relief at the end of Nomo May. It was a long month. I sent out an apology to all of them for my yard, anybody who lives north of me. I apologize for the jungle, but it was really amazing to see the change in the amount of bees that we were seeing, the amount just of everything that we were that we were seeing. And we actually changed what we're mowing at our house. And we also made a change to what we're mowing here at Town Hall. There's a boundary line that's across the back of the building out into the grass there. And Rick and I walked around and so they're mowing sort of a more straight line. They're not mowing all the way up. So we gave back a little bit to the the bees and the birds so that I think being able to walk through and experience what it, what it looked like, made it really easy to do. It actually is a very nice meadow sort of look out, out in the back. So that was a good thing. And Donna asked in the chat about the findings. There was a report that came out of the so the Kent Sustainability Team was approached by the Nature Conservancy to put on a program that they do for community resilience. And that was the report that the Nature Conservancy puts together for whoever they do it for, whatever town they do it for, they created that report. It's in the folder. And we can discuss and we'll look to I guess, accept the report at the next meeting. Can it be changed? Not as far as I know, it's not our report. It's just a report from the Nature Conservancy, but I can ask Adam or ask Leanna to ask Adam.
Is is this report part of any of the Zoom recordings that the Sustainability Team had? Is this something I could see?
No, the Nature Conservancy, it we were participants in their program. So it was their Zoom license, their Zoom recording. They don't share the Zoom recordings, but they did obviously give us their report. So that's what you have to to go over.
So we have this report that was that was produced, but there's no Zoom recording or minutes to these meetings?
So it wasn't a meeting. This would be, in a sense, the the minutes that came out of that program that they put on.
Okay. Okay, can I just make just a just a couple of quick remarks about this report, which I've I've read? And I've actually been on the Community Resilience Building website, so I went on there and, you know, and, you know, I got their website in front of me right here. And, you know, the report is, you know, it follows, you know, a lot of a lot, you know, their template and a lot of their language. So, so, you know, so I was I was interested in reading this and, you know, in the first couple of pages, you know, lots of hurricanes, lots of floods, lots of droughts, lots of talk of heat waves. So so lots of fairly apocalyptic stuff as of as of starting to read this thing. And, you know, and then, you know, and talking about the Superstorm Sandy and Tropical Storm Irene, I mean, you know, I mean, definitely storms that we we experienced here in Kent. And and then and then just, you know, just reading a lot of the strengths of the town, which which I felt were pretty accurate. And then, you know, going into some recommendations of what what of what what we could do to mitigate such disasters. And I guess what I expected, I don't know. I think more about kind of community preparedness and and what a lot of the priority actions were were about, you know, where does the wildlife go in town or where is the, you know, we should have a you know, greater access to the Houstonic River on on the Claire Murphy River Walk, you know, so all of these things, which which are very nice. But but the report starts with with some really hard hitting stuff. And and definitely in some of the priority actions, there is a communications plan. There's there's talk about generators, right, for the senior center and and things of that sort, which is which is great. I would just, I would have wondered if there would have been more of that. And and not only that, you know, a flood is very different from a drought, which is pretty different from a hurricane. And certain areas even of this town are impacted very differently. So so us us on Skiff Mountain Road up there are impacted so much by the flooding, you know, that would be Kent School and those along Route 7. So, you know, so the you know, the disasters that might strike us are very different and affect different people in different ways. And I don't know. I mean, it's just it's just an interesting report. I just would have expected just a few, I don't know, a few other things that would address a few other items that would address a hurricane or tornado. And then, and then, of course, and lastly, just to think about Cornwall, you know, I mean, when I first went to Marvood and and Cornwall was struck by three tornadoes in 89, you know, I would I would even love to even talk to folks in Cornwall and most most of those folks remember that that year, you know, how did they deal with that? It's very serious, you know, problem and how did they recover? So so, you know, so what I'm saying is that, you know, this, this is this is important. This is this is this is good, but but I just expected a slightly different report.
So a lot of the hazard mitigation pieces are pulled right from our hazard mitigation plan that we went over. We had to pass a resolution five or six months ago and I sent the hazard mitigation plan out to everybody. So a lot of that, a lot of the that second, well, a lot of different parts of that are pulled right from that hazard mitigation report. And we had two tornadoes in Kent last year alone, so where, you know, we're dealing with the same thing, not on the on the scale that happened in Cornwall in, you know, 89. And so a lot of the hazard mitigation piece goes relates right back to FEMA priorities. So FEMA, you know, it starts at the federal level, comes down to state, comes down to local, and that hazard mitigation plan touches all of a lot of what you saw in there when it comes to drought, flood and flood would affect floods would have, you know, flooding of the town of the river would definitely affect the entire town. Being up on Skiff Mountain does, you would still be very negatively affected by it because, you know, of a lot of sort of ripple effect reasons, having to divert traffic, having, you know, supplies and equipment, fuel wouldn't be able to come into town as quickly because we would have a lot of, you know, adverse effects on on traffic patterns. So a lot of, again, a lot of that comes from the hazard mitigation plan. And that was sort of a focus of the of their program was talking about and relating back to the that FEMA Hazard Mitigation Plan. So I can ask a couple of questions back to the Kent Sustainability Team. We have been talking about and making plans for other attaining other action, completing other action items on that big, big list of action items that involves the Sustainable CT certification. And we do have the goal of getting that bronze certification, that first level of certification. And one of the really great things that's coming out of this is that one of the members of the Kent Sustainability Team now always is going to be attending the Conservation Commission, so she'll be reporting back to them what's happening with the sustainable folks. And so there's that partnership that's being created and, you know, popping some holes in the the windows of the silos as it were. So they're making good progress there. And moving on to
up again.
Oh, sorry, Donna. I was just curious, can you tell me where the boat launch is? Yeah, so there's a couple of minor errors in there. Donna, I think you know that that boat launch is an error in that report. So we can have Adam fix that. And there was one other thing that somebody brought up a couple of weeks ago, but we can have Adam correct that error.
That's why I asked.
It would be wise to have someone proofread it because there is a lot of errors in there.
So we can we can go back to Kent Sustainability and and have them proofread it and then go back to Adam and have him fix any errors.
I was curious why our social vulnerability index was pretty much one of the highest in Litchfield County outside of the two areas in Torrenton and Winchester. That was figure 2-7 on page 35. I figure maybe it's because of the percentage of population along the river. But I'm not quite sure. I just thought that was kind of interesting. None of the other towns along there seem to have the same Cornwall, Sharon, Kane and Salisbury, none of those have anywhere close to our.
What was that number, 2.7?
2-7, it was on page 35. Then and, you know, there's part of Torrenton and part of Winchester, which is hit the red zone. But other than those other two little places in Torrenton, we're the only dark orange in all of Litchfield County.
Yeah, I can ask why that is.
Thanks.
Moving on to the KVFD ambulance staffing subcommittee, I attend those meetings. We also met the seven town CEOs and EMS fire leadership all have met. And it is evident now that New Milford will likely not be moving forward with the Medic 4 Consortium. So that's going to be a big gap. They account for the largest portion of that contract. I think Bonnie is at 40%. I can pull it up quick.
Yeah, I think it's 40% for New Milford.
So that coupled with, let me just get the right the correct number. So for this 2223 contract year, their percentage is 41.95 of the contract. So the next highest is Washington at 14%. So New Milford stepping out of this is going to cause a a big change in what this contract is going to look like come 2023, and we should be prepared for some sort of alternative model. There is a big, big leadership change at Trinity EMS. There were multiple layoffs at the senior leadership level, so they have a whole new leadership team that's come in. The seven towns asked if I would reach out to them. I reached out, so we are hopefully going to be meeting with them very soon to start seeing what the future of ALS care is going to be in our neck of the woods. The KVFD Ambulance Staffing Committee is also continuing their work on looking at all of the different models. Bonnie, do you want to jump in with anything here?
I really, we really don't have anything to report yet. We're just at the point of gathering information, so.
So looking at the different models from a standalone EMS agency to contracting, you know, complete contracting to a municipal agency, just sort of throwing everything out on the table to to see what makes the most sense, to see what is fiscally prudent, to see what is what what options there are, because we're in a tough spot where we are. So more to come on that. 7.6 Main Street Noise and Traffic.
We continue to meet and now we're focusing on the noise part and the enforcement parts of that, so. So that's what we're working on next. So it's kind of a two-part process. We'll have a report at some point for for this board to consider. But but definitely, they, the the committee was was interested in knowing where we stood with Connecticut DOT. And Jean, thank you for for reaching out to them and and let us know where where that goes. So.
Donna put in the chat to make sure everybody knows that the POCD informational meeting via Zoom is going to be on June 30th. Donna, is that a Wednesday? No, that's probably a Thursday, right? Sorry. It's a Thursday, June 30th at 7 via Zoom, so please, please, please come to that. You know, they want participation as we always do. And I see Andrea has her hand up. I assume from the Noise and Traffic Committee perspective.
Yes. Hi, I am, I ran into somebody this week in town who was wondering how to get involved in our subcommittee, so I didn't know if we needed, I needed to like take that information back to our subcommittee meeting and then it would have to come back to you to get approved during a Board of Selectment meeting. How does that work?
Yeah, so I'd recommend inviting that person to your next subcommittee meeting, having the chat with the with your subcommittee and then subcommittee would make a recommendation to the Board of Selectment to add that person to appoint that person to your subcommittee.
Okay, so it's like a two-meeting process, which could be another month, depending on when we all meet based on your meetings too.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Streetscape Building Committee is sort of on hold, not on hold, but they're they don't have much tasks, many tasks, so there haven't been meeting. And Swift House Task Force. Glenn.
We we last met and we talked about a survey, so we have a bunch of survey questions that we would love to to have citizens of the town take. So so it's at some point that is that is coming up. I I I forget if I forget when we will see that or how that goes out. But but we finalized much of the of the questions and that is that's coming very soon.
So Zan and Marge were in touch with me via email and phone and they gave me the bolus of questions in a Word document and I will start tonight, building the survey. They originally were hoping for Friday, but they wanted to, they had some changes to, I think, the the intro, so I I'll be building the survey over the weekend and should have it hopefully done pretty quickly. And then we'll get back in touch with them for the intro and everything.
Thanks. No, and then also at the meeting, we just talked about our last meeting and 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 where we and where we would go with this. And I think, you know, we talked about possibly contacting John Worthington in Litchfield and possibly doing a job description of some sorts. I don't know where we are with all of that. But that seems to be, that seems to be this body.
Yep, and I can do that now or selectmen's report since we're sort of duck tailing into that. I had, I reached out to John Worthington. We had a couple of phone calls and he offered to meet me at the Swift House to go through the ADA checklist, so we did that on a Saturday morning. Spent a few hours going through a very long checklist. And so that's in your inboxes and we'll, we can have a review of it at the next meeting if you like to talk about where we go with where the compliance is with that checklist. And I'm having a little difficulty finding a job description or finding a town that either has the the position or nobody has a job description, so I'm gonna have to see if CCM or DOJ can help us with how to flesh out some sort of what this person's duties and tasks should be.
So even Litchfield doesn't have one?
I can talk, I can, I can sit again with John and talk to him about what he does and and probably come up with a skeleton of one. So I can loop back around with him and big kudos to John. He has given us a lot of his time and very much appreciate the amount of time that he has invested just as a good community member with a lot of experience.
Great, great. That's good to hear. Thanks.
Sure. Um, selectmen's reports, I feel like I covered a lot. We did have some vandalism that happened a couple of weekends ago at the Welcome Center and Andrew did did an investigation and we were able to, he was able to figure out who it was and it was a couple of local young folks, so we'll, we're going to be meeting with them on meeting with Andrew and Rick and one of the young people tomorrow to have a meeting to just talk about this with their parents and talk about what their community service is going to be, and then we'll be wrapping up with the second one probably next week, but just frustrated by that. And I made a phone call to a local, to actually the vendor who supplied the camera for the Veterans Memorial. And he just got me a quote to put a couple of cameras around the Welcome Center so that we can get some eyes over there and I'll be following up. So that we can get some eyes over there and I'll be following up with that at the next meeting probably.
Was there extensive damage or was it like like a spray paint kind of thing or?
Um, no, they kicked, um, kicked. Quite a bit, the men's room door, the whole, the structure of the, that makes up the stall. And so the the panel, there's one of the panels that connects the door that enables the door to close and lock. That they broke right off the the metal brackets, so that stall actually does not close right now. So Rick is trying to get a replacement panel and I think he's ordering the brackets so that we can get that repaired and back functioning. So hopefully they have learned their lesson. Anyone else with anything with reports from the other Selectmen?
Nope, nothing from me.
I'm good.
Ready. Appreciate everyone's time. Apple says it is 8:04. And I will adjourn the meeting at 8:04 and appreciate everybody's time.
Thank you.